Yeah.
It's so thick. Yeah, we have so many.
You didn't fill one out? Okay. Mohamed, do we have another slip for requests to speak?
Yes. They're, they're, see that they're outside.
Good evening, buenas noches. Tonight, we have a full board meeting, but first, let's have Mr. Gracianno Gomez, a former award-winning journalist, publisher, and yes, he even has his own school named after him in our neighboring city of San Bernardino. And former board member, by the way, Mr. Gomez, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gracianno Gomez. Thank you. Mr. Islam, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, President Montez, I have a report out from closed sessions. The Board of Education denied the request for an extension of a leave of absence for the following certified employees. Employee number two-five-four-eight-eight-one-five. Employee number one-one-six-four-nine-one-five. Employee number one-five-zero-eight-eight-one-five. The roll call board was the five-zero. That's all.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call for the adjournment of closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Time is seven fifteen. We will now be reconvening open session. Could I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Mr. President, what time was, did we take the vote for the record?
Seven fifteen.
Thank you.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Preferential vote by student board member.
Aye.
Thank you, Marisol. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For tonight's presentations, we will begin with middle school district student advisory committee presentations by DSAC, and take it away, Ms. Angulo.
Thank you. Due to testing, not all of our students will be able to be present, but we do have three schools that are presenting, and our first presenter is Valerie Hernandez from Rialto Middle.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Mr. Islam, and our viewing audience. My name is DJ Valerie Hernandez at Friday lunches, but you can call me Valerie. And as Vice President, I am proud to represent the Rialto Middle School ASB. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to share the events of our school. As the year is quickly coming to an end, the Tigers remain busy in all areas. Our Builders Club this month collected shoes to add to the city's collection for Soles for Soles. We collected over nine hundred pairs. They also assisted the fire department and kewanas during the drowning prevention day, setting up, cleaning up, and even assisting the pool staff in the water with the younger kids. At last Saturday's Earth Day Cleanup Day, builders picked up trash, sped mulch in the planters around the MetroLink as well as the downtown business area. On Riverside Avenue, with a special thanks to Dairy Queen who gave all free ice cream cones. Some of our sixth graders, thanks to Councilman Eda Palmer, got to meet with Mr. Jason Brown from Wilderness Engineering. I got a preview of the new Rails for Trails project behind our school. Mr. Brown shared with them information on water conservation, aquifers, landing engineering, the overall trail project, and even some career-related questions. Our eighth graders are getting ready to visit UCLA during the next couple of weeks, giving an inside look at college life. We are currently putting the finishing touches on our eighth-grade year-end notch trip. Mr. Montez? The year-end trip for Club to Raging Waters, a Tigers' Got Talent show, eighth-grade semi-formal dance and celebration. Our STEM Bowl team is preparing for the first middle school competition next month. Our good friends at Jersey Mikes have given us an opportunity to fundraise again, so we joined forces with Cold, Trap, and Wornness to show Jersey Mikes. As a district, we are one. I thank you for allowing me this time to share our campus events with you. The next time we meet, I will be days away from being a high school student. My emotions are mixed, and I am ecstatic for the new challenges, as well as terrified of the unexpected.
Our next presenter is Celestino Luis from Cold Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Interim Superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Celestino Luis, and I'm here to represent Cold's Cougars True Grit. The whole school year, Cougars have shown True Grit, whether it was our amazing sports team, clubs, STEM programs, and/or even helping out in our community. Our Cougars have an amazing football team, a basketball team that went to championships, a soccer team that's working on going to the playoffs, and an undefeated wrestling team. These student athletes have been working hard, not only on the field, but also in the classroom, with good grades. It's just one more example of Cougar grit. Also this school year, we had students who won the district science fair, the county science, and the county science fair. So that's another way Cougars like to represent the Cougar pride. Third, our Cougars are getting ready for Testing Week coming up. Yes, there might be a little tension between the students and the tests, but our students are pulling through it and are gonna get high test scores. Fourth and finally, I would like to thank the DSAC Committee for giving me the opportunity to meet new people and giving me another way to show my grit by standing here and giving a speech to amazing people like you who used your True Grit to get to where you're at right now. Thank you. This is Tina signing off. Good night, Rialto.
Our final presenter is Isaiah Hawley from Cussera Middle School.
Good evening, viewers, board members, and the interim superintendent, Mr. Islam. My name is Isaiah Hawley, and I am the ASB President of Cussera Middle School. Recently, the dancing group Happiness Is Now has visited the school. They busted out some sweet dancing moves while all the while teaching us that if you have the courage, you can follow your dreams and do something that makes you happy in life rather than do something that you don't enjoy. On another note, tomorrow, ASB will be hosting a Glow Dance where Cussera students can dance the evening away in semi-darkness. Snacks and beverages will be sold at the dance to enjoy with your peers. It begins at 3:30 PM and ends at 5:00. Tickets are $4.00 the day of the dance and $3.00 the day before, so don't be late. We have formed a wrestling team as well as a girls' and boys' soccer team. As of now, they are competing against the other middle schools of the Rialto Unified School District and are on their way to success. So far, both the girls' and boys' soccer teams have won their first game and will be playing again today. Go Cussera Coyotes! Right now, students who are having trouble academically can enroll in after-school tutoring. Participating teachers will stay after school in order to assist students with their studies and help ensure success. Tutoring sessions are on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and begin at 3:30 and end at 4:30 PM. Lastly, avid representative from the Loma Linda Hospital. We were informed that six iPads were donated to the Children's Cancer Unit as a total of $1,870 was raised by our school in a penny war campaign fundraiser, which turned out to be a huge success. I thank you for your time and hope that you all have a good rest of the day.
This would conclude our DSAC presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marisol. Next, we'll be honoring REA, CSCA, RSM for Employees of the Quarter. First, I'd like to call our Vice President, Ms. O'Kelly.
Good evening. Usually, I don't need a microphone. Those of you who know me know that, but I'll use one just in case. Okay, I have the pleasure of presenting the REA Employee of the Quarter Award. So let's start with a big round of applause for Mr. Mark Clark, who's gonna come up here and join me. Okay. Mr. Mark Clark is a sixth-grade English Social Studies and Tiger Tech teacher at Rialto Middle School. Mr. Clark is a Riverside native where he still resides. He is a 1980 graduate of Riverside's Poly High School. He also attended Cal State Fullerton. Mr. Clark graduated from Cal State San Bernardino with a degree in Liberal Arts. He began working at the Rialto Unified School District 24 years ago as a third-grade teacher at Morris Elementary School. In 1999, he was promoted as a BITSA teacher, and in 2007, he became a Social Studies and English teacher at Rialto Middle School. For the past three years, Mr. Clark has also been teaching Tiger Tech, a multimedia presentations programming class that provides students the technical tools to design PowerPoints and various technical educational programs. In the 2013-14 school year, Mr. Clark earned the District Teacher of the Year Award and was recognized by the County Schools for Teacher of the Year. You wanna say what you said?
I appreciate the accolades and this honor because there are many deserving teachers in our district. But truly, I enjoy my job, and I have enthusiastic students who wanna learn, so it's a rewarding experience all around.
Mr. Clark is married to Andrea. Is Andrea here? Oh. I'm sorry. The couple has one son, Anthony, who is a freshman at the University of California, Riverside. Is Anthony here?
No, he's in school.
Ms. Lisa Lindberg, President of REA, added, "Mark Clark is an exemplary teacher from Rialto Middle School. I had the pleasure of working with him at Morris Elementary School for many years when he first came to the Rialto District. He has been a member of our REA Executive Board as a middle school director, a site rep, a member of the LCAP Committee, and now our organizing team for REA. Mark was a BITSA support provider for many years and guided his rookie colleagues as they started their careers at RUSD. He has been an invaluable member of REA, a talented colleague, and a true friend." Congratulations, Mr. Clark. Let's give him a round of applause. And I'd like to present you with this certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Mark Clark from Norma Torres, a member of Congress. I better put these on again if I'm gonna read it. The Honorable Norma J. Torres joins the Rialto Unified School District in congratulating you for your recognition as the Rialto Education Association Employee of the Quarter. I commend you on your hard work and contributions to public education. And then, this certificate of recognition from the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education to Mark Clark as REA Employee of the Quarter. Very well done, Mr. Clark.
Maybe you could hold one for him, Ms. O'Kelly.
And, Mr. Clark, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to thank probably a group of people who you seldom hear about, but without whom I couldn't do what I do, the parents of Rialto. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Next up, we have our very own board clerk, Ms. Walker, Ms. Dina Walker, and she will be presenting for RMSA. RSMA, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, what's that one?
Good evening, everyone. I am very pleased to be offering this award for our next staff member. This is for Dr. Mitzi Moreland, and I'm very honored and actually chose to do that because Mitzi and I actually went to college together. So when I saw her name, and I said, "I'll give this award," because we actually attended San Diego State University together, so it's my pleasure to meet back up in this place, especially in the Inland Empire. I don't wanna say how many years later, but years later. But our next employee again is Dr. Mitzi Moreland. She's an Assistant Principal at Kelly Elementary School. Dr. Moreland was born in Los Angeles and raised here in the Inland Empire. She graduated from Ontario High School, and she graduated from Ontario High School. I'll leave that off. Who put this together? Some man. I dated her. She's young, a 25-year-old. After attending Chaffee College, she attended San Diego State University, where she received her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Then, in 2002, Dr. Moreland earned her master's degree in education from National University and also went on to earn her doctorate from Argosy University. Dr. Moreland was first hired by RUSD in 2002 as a fifth-grade classroom teacher at Curtis Elementary School. She transferred to Frisbee Middle School, where she taught sixth grade, but soon after, she decided she wanted to enter administration. She was promoted as an elementary school administrator at Boyd Elementary School in 2007, and then, two years later, she transferred to Kelly. I love Rialto Unified. Smile, Dr. Moreland. Give him that smile. Yeah! I feel that our students, the parents, and the staff are all awesome to work with. It's a rewarding career to help students, and we have supportive parents, and we do agree as well. Dr. Moreland is a single mother of one daughter, Kayla. Kayla, come on, stand up. Can you come over here? You wanna get in the picture? Who attends Garcia Elementary School. And Dr. Moreland was nominated by fellow colleague Joanne Cuellar, RSMA President. Dr. Monte Stewart added, "Joanne said in her nomination that during a very busy time of the year, Mitzi provided a support structure for all administrators to come together and to complete the single-school plan for student achievement. She was especially critical given our shift to the new system of completing this year's task. Mitzi provided a venue through which all members of our administrative team brought their own wealth of knowledge and commitment to supporting each other's efforts of creating a document worthy of the school district it represents. There are many worthy administrators in the district, so I am happy that Mitzi is becoming recognized tonight." Dr. Moreland said, "She is humbled beyond words to receive the District's Employee of the Quarter Award. I am deeply, deeply, deeply honored, and I work with some of the best people who work for kids." So how, so how kind and surprising that I was, it was so kind and surprising that I was selected, in her words. Congratulations, Dr. Moreland. So in that honor and recognition, here is a certificate from the school board, Rialto Unified School Board, for your wallet. Oh, she's crying, for real! And then, we also have a certificate of recognition from from Norma Torres's office, Congressional District. So you'll have that as well, so you can hold those up for the pictures. And after you wanna take a picture, we'd like you to have a few words, too. Okay? So let's get a picture really quick.
I was really surprised, you know, to have such an honor like this. You know, being an administrator, it's one of those positions that you're really internally the person that wants to motivate others, you know, your students, your staff, your parents, and being supportive to them. So to have someone who you work with take the time to nominate you, it's just really a huge honor, just like I said. So to have this is just amazing to me. I didn't expect it. It wasn't something that I thought would happen. I guess everybody doesn't think that, but I'm just very, very honored and humbled at this award. So I just wanna say thank you, and I will be getting Johanna later, because I didn't know who did this. I will be getting her. So thank you very much for this honor.
Next up, we have our very own board member, Mr. Martinez, and he will be presenting for CSCA.
Good evening, one and all. Mr. Mike Sloan, are you here? Come on down, as they say. Do you have any family that you would like to have? Please join us. Yes, absolutely. You know, this really is a family award, because you can't get to where you've gotten without family, friends, you know, your support structure. And tonight, we would like to honor Mr. Mike Sloan, Tech Support Specialist in the District's Information Technology Department, who was selected as California School Employees Association's Employee of the Quarter. And born in Fontana, the Sloan family later moved to Rialto in the 1970s. Mr. Sloan is a proud product of the Rialto Unified School District, attending Dunn Elementary School, Rialto Middle School, and graduating from Eisenhower High School.
Woo!
Should I? Should I give the date?
No. Not your age.
In 1989. Us guys are proud of dates. He first began working at the RUSD as a substitute intern in 1999. If you'd like to share your words on this?
How technology has changed. For one thing, everything has gotten faster and smaller. When I began working here, we would lift a computer monitor that would weigh about 45 pounds. Now it's about five to 10 pounds. Time has changed, and technology, and it's definitely for the better, because our students are open to utilizing technical education more and more.
Thank you. And I don't know about smaller and, and anyway, and lighter? No, anyway. Okay, Mr. Sloan, who lives in Ukaypa, is married to his wife, Brenda, and Brenda's not here. Oh, give her our best. The couple have two sons, Joshua, who is 14, and Ryan, who is 10, and they're home taking care of mom. Okay. His hobbies include watching sports games and working on independent film projects as a filmmaker. Wow, we'll have to get together. CSCA Rialto Chapter President Linda Silva, please come join us, said kindness, patience, sincerity, and compassion are all words that I would like to use to describe Mike Sloan. When we have difficulties with our computers, whether it is network issues or even operator malfunction, his demeanor has a way of calming us while he works to fix the problem, and when he is done, you can't help but say, "He is so nice." Mike is one who gives 110% without a question, and he takes pride in being one of the information technology team members. Mr. Sloan said that after 16 years at the RUSD, he is extremely humbled by this honor. "I'm actually also surprised," he smiled. "I work with some of the best colleagues in IT. They are dedicated and working with school sites and support sites to help students and staff with technological issues. So to receive recognition from my peers is just a humbling experience, and I thank them and the Board of Education for this prestigious recognition." Mr. Sloan, congratulations and thank you. We have a certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Mike Sloan. Yeah, we'll have to resubmit that. Yes, haven't we all been called worse? The Honorable Norma J. Torres joins the Rialto Unified School District in congratulating you for your recognition as the California School Employees Association, Chapter 203, Employee of the Quarter. I commend you on your hard work and contributions to public education. Sincerely, Norma J. Torres, Member of Congress. We'll present that to you first. Then, certificate of recognition presented today, Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015, by the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, to Mike Sloan, Information Support Technology, Information Technology, CSCA Employee of the Quarter. Mike?
Congratulations, sir.
And I believe Linda Silva has a certificate for you also. Please.
This gives me great pleasure, Mike. I want you to know. First, let me share with everyone here today, too, that this is the first time that the actual membership of our union has voted. The entire membership was given opportunity to vote on the Employee of the Quarter. And so, for Mike to receive this, it just gives me great pleasure, because you are one of the nicest guys. And so for Mike to receive this, it just gives me great pleasure, because you are one of the nicest guys we've ever met and worked with. When we get frustrated with our computers and Mike comes, there's an instant calming. I just, you have to know that. And we get frustrated quite a bit, I'm sorry. But CSEA, Rialto Chapter Two-O-three, is giving you the certificate of recognition for Employee of the Quarter for your dedicated service to the IT department and staff of the Rialto Unified School District. Thank you.
Mike, if you have a couple of words?
I'll make it really quick. Information technology is really a team effort, and so the only reason I'm receiving these is because I work with really great people. So this reward is really for all of us, so thank you.
Always a picture. He is so nice.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We are going to skip item B three due to some unforeseen events. The president of the Alliance Club, Rialto Host, called earlier today that they were not going to be able to make it. So they asked us to please reschedule for a future board meeting. So we'll go ahead and skip item B three and go on to item B four.
Good evening, honorable board members, Board President, Interim Superintendent Islam and staff, and of course, the residents and parents of the community. My name is George Harris. I'm the Administrative and Community Services Director for the City of Rialto. And tonight, we have a presentation on the after-school program and a partnership, which is what we see as a great opportunity to partner the district, the Rialto Unified School District and the City of Rialto in putting together a wonderful after-school program, starting in the school year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. With me tonight from the city, I have, they're standing in the hallway, is our city administrator, Mike Story, who's come out in support tonight. Staff, Onyx Jones, who's our interim finance manager with the city and working with us on the presentation, as well as Julio Sausedo, who is our recreation and community services supervisor. There we go. And an additional member of the team is Ms. Regina Criswell, who's an academic, who will be serving the effort as an academic advisor with over twenty years' experience with San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. So as we go on through the presentation, there's certain elements that I'm going to have Ms. Jones come up and discuss, as well as Mr. Sausedo. But this is the culmination of an effort between a large team that's represented by at least six to seven additional City of Rialto employees that we pulled together with history. The last time, we had managed the after-school program for the district, as well as a lot of new blood who's looking at the program with fresh eyes, fresh ambition, and fresh, looking at his fresh opportunity to repartner both the district and the city together. Previously, the program was entitled the Rialto Rocks After-School Program, and we thought in light of the fact that the educational components that have been added to the proposal this time around encouraged much stronger involvement from the education elements and the educational staff that we bring, we planned to bring along into the program. We've decided to change the actual name from the Rialto Rocks to the Rialto Strive Program. So from here on out, the program will be entitled the Rialto Strive Program. And that strive stands for Success Through Results in Visionary Education. And so that's going to set the tone for the rest of the presentation. The mission statement of the Rialto Strive Program is to support participants in reaching their full potential by providing a strong academic foundation that enhances and is aligned with their classroom academic studies. Rialto Strive will provide homework assistance and enrichment classes in a safe and structured environment supervised by experienced and knowledgeable staff. We strive to positively influence participants through quality programs that foster self-discipline, leadership, teamwork, self-esteem, responsibility, community, and multicultural awareness by working directly with students, teachers, school district staff, families, and various community organizations. This program is governed under the guidelines of Proposition Forty-nine, After-School Education and Safety Grant, the Grant Guidelines, which have various requirements. I won't get into the detail in the interest of time, we'll blow through those. But the idea is that we intend to take over and enhance the current school program, after-school program, and far exceed the performance that was done when the city had the program before. In order to be prepared for the subsequent school year, beginning in August of two thousand and fifteen, city staff will, and the school district board must discuss and consider resolutions and MOUs within the next month. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so I got to get real, I was wondering why I can't hear myself. Okay. As well as, after consideration of MOUs, we have to really look at a very aggressive recruitment process. This program intends to employ up to a hundred and thirty-five staff, as well as support staff in the city recreation department. The months of June and July will be fully engrossed in hiring, as well as training, and full development of the ten-month curriculum for the next year. And we'll have a kickoff at the start of the school year in August. And we'll quickly jump into the reapplication process for the subsequent school year, beginning in October of fifteen, which we would handle on behalf of the district. At this time, I'd like to introduce Onyx Jones, who's been with the city under various stints of responsibility. She's served as the finance manager in the Department of Finance for the city for multiple years, and most recently, served as the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Adelanto, and has returned to work and help us in assistance with the development of this program. But at this time, I'll turn over the program outline, academics, and homework assistance, and as well as the extracurricular programs to Ms. Onyx Jones.
Good evening. What we proposed for the after-school program as far as curriculum and education and academics, on the homework assistance component, we wanted to utilize strategies like grouping strategies, where you have students with similar classes and similar subjects that they're learning, and they would work together. As well as, we would also do grouping where we have students who are more advanced, or students who are in the older grades that will assist the students in the younger grades that could, you know, use additional help. So we're going to use some grouping techniques, and then we're also going to use other strategies like manipulatives, where we pull out a bunch of blocks and things that students can count to assist them with math. Some things that they're not really able to do during school, because, you know, it's so rigorous at school, you're going from one subject to the other. So after school, you get to have more fun and pull out manipulatives, and you can have pretend money. And then we're also going to do visuals like cards, visual aids, flashcards, and then also use association where we connect concepts they already learned with new concepts. And then we would like to use daily planners. I know some of the schools already have planners issued to the students, but schools that don't have planners, we would also provide planners for those students. The key would be every student that's a part of the program will document their homework, and we'll get a chance to work with the teachers and the parents in making sure that the students stay on track. Under the academics, one of the subjects we want to emphasize is science. We talked to Dr. De Souza, and he stressed some of the subjects that he felt like the students really should have after school for reinforcement. And so one of the, under the science, we're going to work with several programs. One is aeronautics and astronautics, and that's from the AAIA, the AI-IA, sorry. And then also, we're going to be working with robotics and Bricks for Kids. And all of these, all of these academics curriculum that we're putting together, they actually have STEM standards. And so it's a way of taking science and technology and engineering, combining all those concepts, but making it fun. We've put, we've already put together some activities that are like with building gliders and building solar systems and roller coasters and structures with wheels and axle and motors. So fun stuff that the kids can do, but also educational. Under math, some of the things that we'd like to help reinforce, I know Alex is already a part of most of your schools, but we'd just like to be able to reinforce it after school. So kids that wanted to work on Alex, you know, with additional time, they could do that after school. So we'd have our student, our teachers that are going to be, the facilitators that are going to be helping with the program, we would actually have them trained on it, so they could work with the kids after school. And then edgy tunes, which makes math fun with music. And then bedtime math, which has lots of fun activities, balloons and balls and stuffed animals, you know, fun activities that the kids can learn. And there's also a parent involvement component, where there's projects that they can take home and do with their parents. That's why it's called bedtime math, because they can do it right before they go to bed. The next component, under English, again, Dr. De Souza explained to us that he wanted to do something special with English language learners. And so we researched the Flex Adertacy Program, and that program, there's actually white papers out there where educators have said that this is like one of the best programs out there for English language learners. And so we would work with teachers to identify students that are in the after-school program that could use additional assistance, and we would allow those kids to be a part of that curriculum. But then we also have Rewrite and Think for other groups, and Rewrite and Think, they have worksheets, they have writing tools, they have online games. So those are fun projects, but again, educational. And some of the other curriculum that we found, Brain Pop, which some of the schools have in the district, those schools that don't have it, we can do the subscription for the year, so students at all the schools could actually access Brain Pop. And then Enchanted Learning Activities and Worksheets. Again, are things online, they're very inexpensive, but we can download based on what the students are currently learning in the classroom. We'll work with the teachers here at RUSD. We'll find out what the students are currently learning, and then we'll go find worksheets and activities that mirror that. So they get additional work after school in those subject areas. We also want to add fun, so we're going to have physical activity fit for kids. Health and Nutrition, which talks about diet and nutrition, and so it's educational, but also learning how to be healthier physically. We also would like to, I understand that the teachers will be going through additional PBIS training. We want to speak the same language that the teachers are speaking during the school year. We want to speak it after school, so we'd like to be a part of that training. Two components that we are aware of, that we would like to implement, are the reward system and also a check-in, checkout system. So part of PBIS is if we have students that are having a difficult time in after-school program, we don't want to immediately dismiss them, we want to work with them. We'll have a teacher assigned to that student, they'll check in with the student at the start of the program, find out how their day went, see if there's anything troubling them that day, help get them started on the work that they're assigned that day. And then at the end of the day, they'll check in with that same employee, say how their day went. And, you know, we'll work back and forth with the parents, but the objective is to, you know, use a reward system and keep the kids involved in the program so they can benefit from it, and not just immediately dismiss them from the program. We also have the opportunity to bring in our police department. They have two programs put together, Pride and also Great. And those programs are excellent. They're going to be going out to the students and talking to them about leadership and how to make good decisions, and, you know, how to control their anger, how to respect others. And so that's going to be a great partnership that we will have, just being connected with the city. And then we also have in our proposal that we presented to you, a program for college and career readiness. And so it's called Bridges, it's an online activity, where kids can actually create an account, and this is geared more towards the middle school students, where they can create an account where there's assessments that are done. They can find out what subjects they may be interested in studying in college. They also have, you know, recommended career paths that they might want to take. They have timelines for what things you can start doing now until you're ready to go to college, and so we'll implement that with the middle school students. And then, of course, we want to add visual and performing arts and music and dance and other things, and guest speakers, and some of the city officials that we have connections with, and other people in the community, in the business community in Rialto, bringing them in, and even planning some field trips. The registration process, as it states here, we're going to be able to develop the number of students based on the grant funding and based on the facilities and the size that we have to work with. So we really will partner with RUSD to get as many students in the program as possible. We'll let the parents have plenty of notification of the program, and there will be places for them to go to pick up applications, not only just from the school sites, but also from the R-City Office and also here from the school district's office. So under program administration, what are the responsibilities? The city is going to take on a majority of the responsibilities for administering the grant. Sorry, I don't have my glasses, I have to read this. So we're going to have, number one, we're going to implement the proposal that we gave you. We're very proud of the proposal we put together, but we realize the hard work starts when we actually have to implement it. We're going to recruit and train the staff, purchase supplies, we'll do all the reports that are required, the attendance reports, the fiscal reports, the year-end reports. We'll also be submitting invoices to the district. We realize this current year, the district is the lead on the application. And then we will also prepare the application for the next fiscal year, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen. And at that time, we list the city as the lead as previously done. And then for district responsibilities, really, it's just, you know, to submit the paperwork that we submit and review it. And we will work with the district on the nutritional components and providing the after-school snacks. We need access to the classrooms, playground facilities, you know, maintenance of the facilities that we use. So that's what we have for the district responsibilities. Sorry, there we go. And then for audit, we do understand that all of the books and files that we keep will need to be held for at least five years. That's per the grant requirement. And as we previously assisted with the grant, we maintain those files, we would do the same this year. For the in-kind match, what we did was we went to the website to find out how much the allocation was currently, which was two-point-seven million online. We understand that number could be different, but we just used that for our proposal, but it can be modified very easily. But however, part of the in-kind match requirement, which per the estimate of two-point-seven million, it would come to eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, the city is prepared to contribute quite a bit for that in-kind match, as well as what's allowed through the grant requirements, which is facility usage and snacks. So altogether, the city would be providing fifty thousand from some of the programs we have funded through other funding sources, and then all the support staff. It will probably come to a number much higher than this, but for the sake of argument on this example, we just showed the amount of nineteen percent. Very small print, but you do have it in your proposal. This is what the budget would look like. I just want to note that the grant does allow that you take fifteen percent of the total grant funds, and you can use it for administrative costs. The City of Rialto is prepared to provide our administrative functions at no cost to the school district. So there will not be a fee that we would charge for the services that we provide for all of our support departments, such as finance, IT, our staffing. So anything that's required, HR, the city is going to be providing that. The budget is, again, based just on the numbers we found online. We do have flexibility in these numbers. We do know understaffing. these numbers, we do know under staffing, we have overstaffed. So, if we needed to cut back, we will still meet grant guidelines, which is 20 teachers to one, sorry, 20 students to one teacher. So, we're prepared to meet those guidelines. So, but there is flexibility in the budget if the amount is smaller than what we have here on the screen. The next section, I will bring Julio Salcedo forward, and he'll discuss the staffing and marketing and other components of our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, for allowing us to present. Mr. President Montes, thank you. Mr. Superintendent Islam, also thank you. Members of the audience, also thank you. As you can see from our program, from our organizational chart, the city of Rialto is fully committed to making this partnership a success. As you can see, the community service director would be involved. Also, as the recreation communities and community services supervisor, we would, I would be involved. Under that, we would have what we call programmers, which each would take a number of schools under their wings. And also, under the programmers, we would have a lead facilitator at each one of the sites where the program would be administered. And also, in order to meet the Prop 49 requirements, we would have, we would staff the sites with enough staff that would, that would meet the ratio of 20 to 1. Sometimes, I think that those organizational charts should be turned upside down, because really, our job as administrators is to provide the tools that the frontline staff needs for them to be successful, whether those tools are materials or supplies, or additional training, or so forth. The role of the director in this organizational chart would be, basically, he would be accountable for the overall direction of the program. The role of the recreation and community services supervisor would be to oversee the staff development and training. The role of the programmers in this, they would be responsible to work with the academic advisors in order to plan the academic curriculum for each site. The lead programmers, they are crucial in this effort, because they're the ones that are going to establish the relationships at each site, the relationships with the school administration, with the teachers, and with other stakeholders in that community. And of course, the program facilitators, they would be the frontline staff who would be there to implement the curriculum, who would be there to help the kids one-on-one, who would be there to basically serve as a resource to the kids and to the community The recruitment process would be, would be an aggressive recruitment process, but that just shows how excited we are about this partnership between the city and the district. The, our HR department, our human resources department would pull all the resources in order for us to get the right staff at the right locations, which would include offering the positions to current staff that are already working in the after-school programs. We understand that there's a bond and a relationship that is formed between, between groups of kids and staff, and you really do have some caring staff working currently in your after-school programs, so we wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel. We would definitely promote and welcome any of those staff to apply for the positions. The, the positions, as you saw, the curriculum is going to be pretty aggressive. So, we also want staff that is going to be able to teach and to follow that curriculum. So, we would also target colleges and universities, career centers, again, current, current school district, part-time staff. And our goal is for the staff to have at least an AA degree, preferably with child development courses under their belt. We would also target local job fairs in order to find people suitable for, for the challenge of teaching the curriculum. And also, just because our partnership with CPRS, the California Parks and Recreation Society, we would also promote and market the positions in their website and in their The Rialto Strife Program, we know that the partnerships, the relationships that we, that we create, that we nurture are going to be an essential part of it, because we want all the stakeholders in the communities to be involved. We don't want to go into a certain area and think we're the experts and just dictate. No, we want to use the experts in that area, which in this case would be the teachers, the Rialto Unified School District staff, parents, PTA members, neighborhood associations. So, in the, in the PowerPoint presentations, it says that we'll have quarterly collaborative meetings. But I'm thinking that at the beginning, those meetings will probably be once a month or even bi-weekly meetings, just in order for us to be on the same page, and in order that, that if something needs to be fixed, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to wait until the next quarter, that we'll, that we'll be able to identify it and fix it quickly. Other, other, other strategies that we will use, it would be monthly newsletters, newsletters that highlight the activities and the future plans for the program. We will, at the, of course, with permission with, from the Rialto Unified School District staff, we would love to participate in teacher meetings and other meetings and trainings, because as Ms., as Ms. Onyx mentioned before, we want to speak the same language. We want to be in par and with what is happening on the, on the classroom. That way, we're not teaching anything completely different, but we're just enhancing what is going on in the classroom and paying attention to the areas where the kids are needing the help. Teachers and parents will receive regular feedback. We are thinking in the form of check, grade checks that we can send to the kids if we see that they're needing help. That will, that will keep us informed of the areas that are in need of attention, and we can specifically target those areas. Students, parents and teachers, we will, we're going to ask them to, to be part of the process in making decisions through surveys and other tools in order for, for them to increase their participation in the program and for us to increase the knowledge of how the program is working and what changes, if any, we need to make. Students will also be complete, be able to complete an annual evaluation that can be, that can be composed of a pre- and post-evaluation of classroom and program performance. Our marketing strategies basically is to let everyone and their neighbor know about our program. Flyers, newsletters, we hope that, that the, that the dates that we presented will, will come to fruition, and we hope that before the year ends, we're able to provide a flyer and hopefully, an application to students, to interested students, so they can take home before the school year ends. Apart from that, we also have many social media outlets, like YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, all those wonderful social media that, that kids are so interested in nowadays and that parents police them very well through them. Also, the City of Rialto Quarterly Community Magazine, which goes to every household in the city of Rialto, will be part of our marketing strategy. And also, as I understand, the school district uses an app that, that is called the Remind Me App. We plan to use that also in our program to maintain close communication with the parents and let them know, keep them up to date on a, on a day-to-day or a week-to-week basis of any information that, that would be relevant to the program. Why partner with the city of Rialto? The city of Rialto has a reputation for commitment to excellence, to safety, high levels of service to the community. We have staff that are excellent at customer service, at coming up with innovative ideas, and also to access to the latest technology. As Mr. Harris mentioned before, the administrative services that the city, that the city has, for example, human resources, payroll, finance, purchasing, IT, they would all be 100% committed to the success of this program. We also have a Rialto Youth Collaborative, which actually is currently, for the past years, has been, has been doing fundraisers that have benefited Rialto Unified School District students. And we continue, not on, we plan to not only continue that, but hopefully, make that grow so more Rialto Unified School District students can benefit from that, especially those students in the music and visual, and visual arts. And by the way, the Rialto Youth Collaborative is hosting a jazz festival this weekend. I'm sure you all heard of it, I'm sure I'll see you all there. It's for the benefit of the, of students in the Rialto School District, among other youth groups in the city. But it all comes down to this, we definitely know that we serve the same population, we serve the same students, your students are our members, our participants, we serve their parents, their grandparents, their uncles, aunts, and we definitely think that by pulling our resources together, we will further our goals and objectives of both entities. And basically, it comes down to that. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris, and any questions that you might have.
Is it time for questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Couple of things. First of all, in terms of recruiting for this thing, program, who's going to take care of the background checks and fingerprinting?
The city of Rialto will, through our police department.
Okay. And in terms of the training, since the city has not done this before, who are the experts that are going to provide the training?
Well...
We have partnered with educators to identify curriculums that have training included with the curriculum. So, many of the curriculums we showed, they actually have professionals that will come out, like Bricks for Kids and the robotics, they actually come out and train us and kind of certify us in that area. And they actually will assist us throughout the year with the program, so they'll be teaching, partnering with us.
Okay. And how are we going to know these people will enjoy working with kids? If they're not the current staff that everybody seems to be very happy with, you know, if you're just pulling in a lot of people, and then, they get hired and really don't enjoy working with kids, then we have a problem.
I would agree, we would. So, ideally, we expect that the bulk of the staffing is going to come from the existing program, and then, we would very, be critical as to who we bring in front of your children. So, as we go through the recruitment process, we're not only looking for qualities, individuals that are, actually have goals of being in education, but also looking at other experience that they may have, where they've also worked with kids and had, and had great experience. We actually have some staff that work for our recreation department that aspires, that aspire to be teachers, that are excellent with our kids, our lifeguards, our daycare staff, folks that, that have a passion for working with children, work with us now in both your district and our city, and so, those are going to be the target for the first, the first wave of hiring.
And one more. And you said here that the Rialto Youth Collaborative can be leveraged for fundraising, why would we need to fundraise for this program? Currently, the grant's covering the entire cost.
Absolutely. And so, the core, the core program will be funded by the grant. But as we are embarking on providing other opportunities to the children, we're looking at field trips, we're looking at bringing in guest speakers, we're looking at bringing other experiences that, that may be outside of the scope of the typical activities in the, in the classroom, which are going to be funded by the grant. So, I'll give you an example, the, the Rialto Youth Collaborative Jazz Festival that's happening this Saturday is intended to bring purchased equipment for visual and performing arts programs. And so, if we're going to have that element, as we've committed to have that element in the program, the purchase of the actual instruments, the purchase of the actual elements to be able to provide that program, may not be covered under the funding of the grant, so we're going to look for additional sources of revenue for that. And so, the opportunity to leverage the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that exists, we can have different opportunities, fundraising activities that we can use to raise money.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harris, just a comment here. Less is more, what I mean by that, when working with our kids, a diffused or a filtered level of safety and security. This is an opportunity where our kids sometimes are intimidated by the traditional force. And when you can filter that down, and with, by no means, no disrespect to our security staff or anything, but, you know, you, you diffuse the situation and maybe put them on bicycles and take the vests off and just a different kind of shirts as safety ambassador or something like that, they look at it a lot different. They, they, they welcome it, they know who they, who they can go to, and they, they know, they, that like the Bumper Morgan, I know him by his first name. And then, later, they might see him in the uniform, in the, in the police car, they might say, wow, that's the same person. You know, it just makes them look a little different at the services that we offer within our community, because these are kids, they're, you know, they're just...
Absolutely.
So, just a suggestion.
Okay, duly noted.
Thank you.
President Montes, I've, I've got a list that I've compiled that I'd like to turn over to the city when I've read it for the public. May I?
Sure.
Okay. Regarding this program, first of all, I want to be very clear, I'm very glad the city and the school district are always collaborating and moving more so in that direction, but I've got some real academic concerns. Historically, this collaboration, this program historically, provided jobs through the city, but did not meet the academic component of the grant. At that time, the RUSD absorbed the program to benefit the students. Think Together is a solid academic program that has benefited our students, our current program with Think Together is working well. Why are we changing to a historically failed program? How will this program academically be an improvement to our students? I have not seen that we have compared the ACES and the Think Together programs or curriculums to make sure that it is a better program we're moving to. What checks and balances do we have that will assure the academic component is made priority? It seems the ACES program is, is an online program. In checking with the city, there are no employees hired to staff the program yet. How are we assured that hires will be qualified to teach the program and answer student questions? What academic qualifications must hires have? You did touch on that. What training will they have after hiring, specifically? What assurances do we have that this will not become what it was, a non-academic after-school care program? And finally, with a million-dollar program, why have we not gone out to bid as California contract code requires? And that is addressed to both school district and the cities, but I would like to turn this over to you at this time.
Absolutely, okay.
And at this time, no, no answers are required, but I would like answers in writing later, please.
Absolutely. We will provide those answers in writing, but I would like to caveat, we, the emphasis placed in the design of this new program is to not mirror what had happened before in the, in the previous Rialto Rock Rialto Rocks program. Matter of fact, before you today are individuals that weren't associated with that program. And we've received the message from the district and staff, we've met with them on multiple occasions, and the emphasis of academic success through this particular program is how we are basing the design of this program. The academics are number one. You notice, as we went through the presentation, the academics come first, right after they finish their homework, where they're going to get more academic exposure. And the recreational side of it is going to be considered extracurricular at this point as we develop those, the curriculums themselves. So I can tell you, message received, no heart loss here, I was not involved with the program before, and I've heard the messaging from more than a couple of people, those parents who were, who had their kids involved in the program, as well as the staff. And so we are committed to make sure that the academics stay number one.
Could I, I'd like to be assured, because you've assured us of everything else, and updates and so forth, but I have not seen that academic feedback will be given regularly.
Absolutely. As you go through the proposal, you'll identify, will identify the intake process, which is going to involve an assessment for the kids as they come into the program, and then regular checks against that original assessment to make sure that they are improving academically. And so that is, we are committed to that.
Okay. And the bottom line is, how is this a better program than the current program? That's a very important answer. I don't expect an answer.
Right, okay. And so we'll provide a response.
Thank you, President Montes.
You're welcome, Mr. Martinez, Board Clerk, Mrs. Dina Walker.
The first question is, in one of the pages, it says, "No student will be refused service due to failure to pay." Are students paying for the program? But that's listed here. Is there a fee for the program? That's what I'm asking.
There is no fee for the program, and the idea is, we are going to continue to provide the program in spite of any issues as far as the accounting or so far as, as far as we being reimbursed. But in addition to, Onyx has a couple of comments, but that was a, that was actually a comment made in the Think Together proposal that is a comment, as a, that is actually, it's a statement that we must commit to as part of the ACES guidelines, if that makes sense. And so we want to just reiterate that in our program, just like any other applicant who applies for an ACES grant, we are committed to make that same warrant.
Yeah, but we certainly don't want our kids being charged. This is a grant-funded program.
That is correct.
Okay.
It's part of the grant guidelines because it is allowable, and so there are programs out there that do charge, but they cannot deny a student enrollment into the program if they can't afford it. So they actually do allow for it, but we're just acknowledging that we understand that requirement, but there will be absolutely no charge. We're prepared to absorb all the costs of the program with the grant funding. And just a side note to discuss, since we're talking finances and I'm the finance manager for the city, one significant difference between Think Together and Rialto Unified School District is, we will not be requiring any administrative costs. So every, not only are we not requiring administrative costs out of the grant, but we're going to be putting back into the grant to help meet the in-kind requirement. So the district will have a smaller amount of in-kind requirement to meet, as well as they won't have to share any administrative costs with us. We're going to absorb that cost. So speaking in terms of dollars and cents, you're going to get more out of the program if we're running it, because we'll have the more funds to work with that will go back into the program that directly impact the students.
One thing, one thing I would like to see if this, if this is to hap, going to happen, is a very detailed budget of salaries and everything, everybody being paid by this grant, and then how much is for the other things that you need for the students.
Yes, we agree.
So my second question was, in the hiring, looking at who's going to staff the particular programs, and I know in our meeting, when we had a joint meeting, one of my concerns was about making sure that we had opportunities for our local residents to apply and to be, if there's an opportunity for them to have preferential hiring, that we can do that. And whatever that means, in the parameters in your descriptions, whether they be, you know, former graduates of our school district, current employee, whatever that means, or residents of Rialto, is that still applicable? And is there an opportunity so that it is set up that way, so that we will have an opportunity to feed back into our own economy of the city?
Absolutely, absolutely. As we direct the hiring of our own employees at the city, this would be no different. So we have preference, we really can't call it preferential hiring, as you know, that that's, we technically cannot do that. But through the marketing efforts, through the targeted marketing, we'll be absolutely focusing on individuals that came from this community and still reside in this community.
And will you be able to actually give us a report on what that looks like? About where the hirings for this particular program are residing or from that point?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Of course, if they release it and say, this is where I live. So yes, we will...
Well, it doesn't have to be by individual person.
Right, yeah, we will have that information.
Thank you.
Okay, and if I may, just one more question, please, Board. We have a full agenda still ahead of us, and we definitely value the time here from the city officials. So take it away, Mr. Rialto.
I just want to take advantage of this opportunity, because these opportunities don't come by that often. I think this is a great opportunity for our city, and I'm excited about the partnership. Miss Dina Walker kind of asked the question for me, because I think that's another opportunity to try to hire within the neighborhoods. I would like to add to that, and if we can find individuals who have the skills to tutor, and I would even take it even a little farther, not just the skills, but who are willing to tutor. That's a big need that our kids have. Partner that with an incentive program that we're not really good with. I'll give you an example: since you're the city, you're closer to the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses, they might be able to provide coupons, reduced fees for whatever movie tickets. Those are incentives that kids will just lap up, that we don't always have available. So you put it together, whoa, it's just a win-win for the kids, the staff, and our whole community. The parade, the marching band, everything, I can see it right now. So we're excited.
So with that, Board, if we have any further questions, I just would recommend that we forward that to Mr. Islam, so we can get it to the city for responses. I want to thank you, city officials, City of Rialto, for coming here tonight and presenting. Thank you, city manager, for being here tonight, and awesome presentation. We look forward to getting some more feedback in this ongoing process. Thank you, thank you. Next up, we go to item C, public comments. Item one, comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. And I'd like to call up Ms. Josefina Banuelos. Ms. Josefina Banuelos here tonight?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Josefina Banuelos, y vengo a poner una queja de la Escuela Warner.
Con permiso, ¿gustaría un entrape de?
Sí, por favor.
Okay. Si pudieran, nomás darle tantita chance después de, para que...
Vengo de la Escuela Warner.
Coming in from Warner School. And I would like to place a complaint. Regarding the principal Scott. She has requested three appointments, and I have not been able to meet with her. On the 14th, my daughter was injured or attacked in the playground. And she had a substitute maestra? Substitute teacher. And my daughter was bleeding from her nose. And her hands. And the substitute did not send her to the office. And I'm really bothered. Since I went to pick up my daughter. And she was crying, and she said, continúa rápido, yo la sigo. And she mentioned to me that they did not send her to the nurse's office. And I have no idea what's going to happen with my daughter. Scholastic way, or as far as the studies, I don't know if she's doing well or not. And the director is racist, very racist. And she does not give us the time to see us quickly for our appointments. And I would like to know what's going to happen with this. I am not going to be, go ahead and speak with her, or direct myself with her, but with Mr. Apollonio. He's the one that tends the Hispanic individual much better, or gives them proper attention, and my daughter says that they do not clean the bathrooms. And she says that they don't have any security, so they could cross la calle, cross the streets, okay? Adentro, inside the school, pardon me. But the traffic, the vehicles drive through very quickly or fast. And I would like to know how you could help us. And we don't have any tutoring? For Spanish? Or math? And I would like to ask for help, that you could help us with that. For many children, not only my daughter. There's a lot of children in the school that are not doing well, and they have poor grades. I would like to know if we're going to get any help regarding tutoring? If not, then I will remove my daughter from that school. Well, they say she's in first place, but I don't understand how. And we have a lot of teachers that are... They do not make an announcement or warn us that they're going to be absent. And there's too many substitute teachers. And they cannot control the school. And they send their children to different classrooms, other different classes, okay? So due to the fact that the teachers don't show up, and they don't make a warning about the absence on time, on a timely manner. And that's it. Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias, señora Banuelos. Vamos a darles sus preocupaciones, a los directores aquí, a la oficina del superintendente. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Ms. Banuelos. We will forward your concerns to district staff, your superintendent's office. Next, we have Cecilia Figueroa.
Hello, good evening. The Rialto member of the state board. My name is Cecilia Figueroa, I am 20 years old. I am from the City of Rialto. I am here today, part of the community of Rialto, to personally thank you, to everyone who's helped us, especially the interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, thank you very much. And the principals of Rialto High School, Arnie Ayala, the principal of Eisenhower High School, Scott Sparks, and Jerry Stermer, the assistant principal, also the principal of Cold Middle School, Caroline Idy, and assistant principal Margaret Simmons, and of course, our community friend, the principal of Cold Middle School, Monique Conway. All these people and other staffs of the Rialto School District, like George Palmer, who works in the facilities, have shown time and support, with time and support with sports of all kinds. I'm speaking for the whole organization in Rialto, who are doing the good for our kids, because I am a mother too. Thank you very much for all your support, and I just want to thank you personally, because this is to keep our children out of the streets with any type of sports, you know, and thanks to you guys' support, helping us with fields and all that, we keep the kids out of the streets, distracted, you know, no drugs, nothing like that, and I just wanted to thank you personally. This summer, we are going to serve our community, Rialto Youth Municipal Soccer League, to help our kids. Please, board members and everyone present, don't forget our name, because we are going to be successful to help our kids be, stay out of the streets. You know, I don't know how to thank you, I'm very appreciative for you guys' help everywhere, you know, for all of our kids in Rialto, and soon we will be helping more. I am a mother, and I'm very concerned too, and also I want to thank my dad too, because he years, years has helped the community of Rialto, you know? And, well, we wouldn't be able without you guys' help, you know, and I wanted to thank you very much. Our saying is, healthy mind and healthy body, doing sports, also good grades, good kids equals academic success. Right? Thank you very much for your time.
Would you like to call your father up and give his name, so we could recognize your father and what his name is?
Yeah.
Nombre, por favor.
Luis Figueroa, my dad, I'm very proud of her. I hope I speak English like her, but prefer to use nice lady right here. So muchas gracias, señores de la mesa directivas, por supuesto también al señor Garcia.
Thank you, school members, and Mr. Mohamed.
Señora Valenzuela, señor Montes. Mr. Ayala, and everybody, everyone else. Ms. Dina.
And congratulations for being here with us. And I'm very grateful with the district, for the great help that you're offering or giving us. And to be able to have the student be very involved in sports and active in sports. And there's many organizations in the City of Rialto, that they also, that have the same kind of work that we do. And there's many parents, in the name of those parents, and I come in to give you my personal thanks, and all of you guys, for the great support that you've given us, and that you will continue giving to us, and thank God for that. And thank you.
Gracias, thank you.
You have a good evening. Thank you very much, you're helping our kids, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Figueroa family, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Russell Silva. Not on the agenda.
Good evening, board members, administration and viewing audience, my name is Russell Silva. Many people come into our lives at various times and places, but it is rare to have an individual who will come in and effect positive change in your life. This type of person is willing to jump into a raging sea with no concern for their own safety, but more concerned about the ones that need to be saved. In September of 2013, when the district was at, was seeing the lowest place in history, one person accepted that challenge and leaped in with two feet. They didn't have to do it, they could have stayed on the shore and had somebody else do it, but not this person. They saw what the need was to save this district from drowning, and it was more important to secure a positive future for the students. They saw something that nobody else did, the calm at the end of the storm. For all of us who have witnessed the last 20 months, the seas are still a little choppy, but the safe harbor is in clear sight. The battle wasn't easy, there were some big challenges, and there were a few mistakes. But our newly-placed captain accepted these challenges and responsibilities, and the consequences for his actions and his decisions. And now, newspaper headlines have changed from adverse accusations to positive acclivations. Thank you, Mr. Islam. Thank you, Mr. Islam. You understood what it takes to put a strong team together, to help this district guide them through the storm. And you selected them well, from your administrative staff, to the LCAP and the Measure Y Committees, you have made positive moves within the district. You have brought strong personnel and community leaders and members together for goals that follow your goals exactly to the T. What is best for the students of this district. You've also kept in strong momentum the continued support for the district English Language and Superintendent Parent Advisory Committees. Those are important processes that need help and keep going. So, Mr. Islam, actually Mohammed, and I call you Mohammed because I consider you my friend. Know that you are well respected and loved by the community, the district, and the employees of this school district, and most importantly, the students. Thank you for your unselfish devotion to this district.
Thank you, Mr. Russell Silva, many people share same sentiments, and I don't think there's anybody here that disagrees with you, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Edward Brantley.
Hello, everybody. Little too close. My Barry White voice. Many of you know me as Angela Brantley's husband, that's a proud role. What you don't know about me, only Dina knows. My life is really surrounded in youth development, a few different organizations that I work with. I helped found the Youth Action Project, based in Seminario Dino, where we match college students up with high school students. About fifty-two, forty-seven college students work for us as tutors and mentors for Seminario Dino Unified School District. I also work with the Juvenile Justice Commission, I was recently appointed as a commissioner. So, going into the prisons, solid work. Kinship Support Services is another organization I work with. Most recently, I started working with the Rialto Community Coalition, because I have kids here in the Rialto School District as well. I have a daughter in tenth grade at Carter, and I have a son at Cope, seventh grade, so I'm a concerned parent as well. So, what the coalition is doing is working to prevent underage drinking and drug use. And so, we actually started these sessions where we use the input of our kids, as well as community members, to come up with a plan. So, we identified three different areas that, well, they identified, three different areas that they really wanted to see happen. One was a safe place to go in their off time. They came up with a youth cafe, a safe place. They also wanted to change the images that they keep seeing, you know, on YouTube, on, you know, all the social media. So, the negative images, they wanted to see some positive images. So, we came up with a strategy to campaign positive images. And so, what we came up with, what the kids came up with, is kickbacks. So, we're having a Positive Images Kickback, the second of May. We're actually working with the police department, they have a brand new curriculum that they're rolling out. Our effort is really to get this out to your schools. You have the first fifteen minutes coming up, event, I think that would be a perfect opportunity to get these flyers out. And I'll share these with you, and I think my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Brantley. Next, we have Ms. Paula Bailey.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Superintendent and viewing audience. I was at a training this morning, and I had heard some wonderful information that came about because of our Carter High School ASB students. When our special ed students were no longer able to do fundraising for an event that they annually had done, the ASB students stepped up and they took over to make sure these kids really had what they needed. So, hats off to Carter High School, ASB students and their leadership, because without their leadership, would it have happened? Absolutely not. So, that's all I have to say, it was very, a very proud moment, being where I was at and having somebody else bring this up.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, thank you, thank you. And anybody, community members, parents, staff members, please feel free to come up and just share something positive like Ms. Bailey just did. So, we thank Carter ASB for stepping up to help their fellow peers, special education students with their fundraising efforts, so kudos to them and to the school. Last but not least, we have Ms. Celia Salaya.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva. Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva, presidente, Mr. Montes, superintendent, Mr. Islam, and the audience.
Good evening, board members, and also President Montes and Mr. Islam, and the audience.
Mi nombre es Celia Salaya y soy coordinadora de Amigos Unidos, Grupo de Apoyo para Padres de Niños Especiales.
And my name is Celia Salaya, and I am the coordinator for Parents, Friends, United Friends, and this is a group that supports parents for special needs students.
Y estamos aquí porque tenemos entendido que este día van a elegir al superintendente.
And today we are here tonight, because we have the understanding that they're gonna elect the superintendent.
Venimos a brindarle nuestro apoyo al nuevo superintendente, cualquiera que sea.
And we are here to offer our support, whoever that may be.
Y a la mesa directiva, esperando que hayan tomado la mejor decisión para el bienestar y el éxito de nuestros estudiantes.
And to the board members, we hope that you have made the best decision, and also towards our students, and the success for our students.
Y nuestra comunidad.
And our community.
Esperamos que nuestro distrito sea el mejor.
And we hope that our district would be the best.
Con la esperanza de que ningún niño se quede atrás.
With the hope that no child would be left behind.
Igualdad de oportunidad.
And there would be equal opportunity.
También estamos muy felices.
And we are very happy.
Por la propuesta de los programas después de escuela que hizo la ciudad.
And we're very happy with the proposal that the city made regarding the after-school programs.
Sabemos que serán de gran beneficio para nuestros estudiantes.
And we know it's gonna be a very beneficial towards our students.
Pero queremos estar seguros, que también los estudiantes de educación especial van a tener la oportunidad de participar en estos programas.
And we also wanna make sure that the students that have special needs will be able to take part in these programs.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, gracias. That concludes, well, open non-agenda and agenda items, now we go on.
Can I ask for comments from association members?
Now we go on to comments from association executive board members, do we have anybody here from REA that would like to? Yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
Good evening, my name is Deb McKenzie, I'm a teacher here in Rialto School District for twenty-seven years. I have worked at Dulahan for the last twenty years. While I was there, we had the Rialto City After-School Program, Rialto Rocks. And let me tell you, it left a bad taste in a lot of people's minds. It was not a well-run program, it did not do anything for the kids academically. Think Together came in, it's a totally different program, they work well with the administration. They have good classroom leaders that actually work with the kids to complete their homework. They have good management skills, the kids are not running all over the place, they're not leaving messes behind in the classrooms like we were used to. It's a good program. I was always taught if it's not broke, don't fix it. I don't know why you're looking at any other after-school program, because as far as I know, nobody at my school was ever contacted as to whether they liked the Think Together program, if it was working for our students, if it was working for our parents. Let me tell you, the staff at my school, and some of the other schools that I know have the program, will tell you, it works for the students, it works for the staff, it works for the parents. Now, it was a very good presentation that the city put on, and they have lots of good ideas. But this is the end of April, Think Together is already registering students for next year. According to what they said, they need to hire at least a hundred and thirty-five people, get them trained, and in place for the program to start in August, when school starts. That's not a lot of time to do that. And if they wanna have a quality program, how can they have a quality program if they throw it together in two months? I agree it's a good idea to partner with the city, I like that idea, but I don't think this program at this time is the best way to do it. If you wanna partner with the city for the after-school program, then maybe look at it for next year, when they have time to get all of their personnel in place, their training in place. Everybody knows what's going on and everybody's on the same page. But to do it this late in the game, for something that we don't know if it's gonna be better than what we have, and we know what we have is better, I don't think this is the best time to do it. Think Together is a good program, we'd like to see it stay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
I just wanna say that I support the after-school program under the city. I worked with the city of Rialto and with the after-school program for about three years, and we did an excellent job. I just don't know why it was decided to contract with somebody else, and I don't, I'm not saying anything about the other contractor, but I, when you have two government entities that are, that have all these resources for the students, you're gonna get a good program. My name is, I forgot to say my name, Rafael Chavarria, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rafael. Okay, and did, we have a representative here from Congress, no?
Hi, my name is Rafael Trujillo, and today I'm here as a parks commissioner. So, I wanted to kinda just talk about the potential partnership between the city and the school district. One of the great things that the city has is that they also have a parks commission. There's seven members who represent, who are an advisory board to the city council. And every month, we actually have these programmatic updates from the Parks and Recreation Staff. So, it's another layer of people who are passionate about our youth, who are able to ask questions, are able to kind of review the kind of, the programs and decisions that are being made. And that's one of the reasons why we're so excited about this potential partnership. We do have another partnership as well, with the basketball program and the after-school program for that. I, you know, I'm a big supporter of us working together. I was there at the orientation and the assessment that they did for our students. And they're actually having a championship game on, tentatively set for May twenty-fourth, which is a Sunday. They've been playing every Sunday this, these past couple of weeks. And so, I just wanna let you know that, I hope you guys can come to, to the championship game, and really kinda look at this partnership as a way for other cities to get the best of, the students to get the best of people who really care and about the opportunities that are offered to them. I know what the parks commission, that's something that's constantly part of what we talk about on our monthly meetings. And just wanna say thank you for having me, and I hope that we, I'm able to come back here and really talk about some of the successes that this program's gonna have in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Ms. Lindberg, would you like to say, would you like to say something?
Good evening, board members, interim superintendent Mohammed Islam, my name is Lisa Lindberg, I'm the president of the Rialto Education Association. I had hoped by this point in the board meeting, I would be able to say to all of you, good job. But I'm gonna say it anyway, 'cause I think eventually what's supposed to happen will happen. Good job, I'm so proud of you all. You did, you did a really thorough search, and you went with a search firm, it was objective, and I'm just so impressed. And many of my colleagues wanted me to share that with you. I would also like to thank Mr. Mohammed Islam for his service. I would like to share a story when I first met Mohammed, when he came to the district. He and I had lunch down at Kukas in the corner somewhere, and he was eating chips like a madman, I remember that. And at one point in our conversation, and I realized at that point, when I eat lunch with Mohammed, it's going to be a two-hour thing, and it has been since then. I said to him, "You are going to get some pushback, you are going to be told no, and what are you going to do about that?" And he said to me, "I will do what is right," and I never forgot that, and I appreciate it. So, I'm gonna get off the mic to move these things along, there appears to be a young family in the audience that would like to go home, I'm sure, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lindberg, thank you. Anybody from CSEA?
This'll be the end of it, I promise, for night. Good evening, board members again, and superintendent Islam, associate superintendent, staff and community. I would like to start this evening by saying, Rosie, Happy Administrative Professionals Day. Our district is loaded with a lot of administrative professionals. However, with the ones we do have, we have a huge, huge shortage. All of our clerks and secretaries are overworked, our budget clerks, everyone that assists an administrator in this district. It isn't so much that we are overworked, as much as back in the day when you decided you needed the registration center, that you took staff away from our schools. The registration center proved to be a benefit thing, a real, real good thing, but the registration center closed. And all that work went back to the school sites with no additional help given back to us. So, now we do the registration, our records office is understaffed. And because they are understaffed, the work from there has now been divvied up back to the school sites again with no help. And now you wanna add more administrators to the elementary schools. With one secretary and one clerk at an elementary school with more than six hundred students, parents, staff, and administrators, it's a virtual impossible job for them to be able to stay on top of things. When things don't get done, complaints come to you. And yet, we are working and working, we have employees staying way beyond their workdays, and I have to tell them to go home. We need help. I'd like for you to please consider putting some help back at the schools, namely the elementaries especially, and get them the help that they need. And that's what I would like to ask you on this Administrative Professionals Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda Silva. And for the record, I was against closing that registration center and the health clinic.
And I wasn't on the board yet.
Alrighty, up next, do we have anyone from RSMA that would like to speak?
Good afternoon to the board, to cabinet, to, can you hear me?
No.
Oh, sorry. On behalf of RSMA, I'm president, I'm Dr. Monty Stewart, the president of RSMA. On behalf of the board and the management team, we'd like to say thank you, Mr. Islam, for all your hard work. And I would, I'd like to reiterate the sentiments from Lisa Lindberg. You have done what's best for students. Okay? And we want to say thank you for all your hard work. Thank the board for your support for Mr. Islam. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Next, do we have anything from CWA?
Good evening, board and Mr. Islam. Everybody's been talking about a great, great job Mr. Islam has done. And it took Lisa to explain to me why we have a standing luncheon date for over a year and a half. And because he talks two hours to people, I'm still way down the list waiting for our luncheon. I've worked with Mr. Islam for years. He has done, I think, a tremendous job. And I hope he stays here at this district for a long time, because I know that his expertise in the financial aspect will help turn this around so that she can get the help that she needs, because it's going to take what? Money. And everything's going on. I know that a lot of you have seen the news today where Compton's saying they don't have any money. I don't believe it, but it takes people like Mr. Islam to control and bring, turn things around. So I've been very happy to work with him. I came up here tonight to really just thank Derek Harris, because he invited me to the Association of California School Administrators that I went to on Monday night. And I thought it was really tremendous to see Angela walking up there getting her award and everybody going, "Yeah." Because we all support each other that way. And I hope that things keep going. And because Angela got it for value diversity, we need to have her trained substitutes in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearing, there are none. Board, if possible, I just, for the essence of time, I think there are a lot of people here tonight that are waiting for us to get to agenda item K. Is it K? Where is it at? K six? And if we could just take action on that and get it out of the way so that children can go home and get tucked to bed and other people that are here tonight for the special item, K six. We can take action on it, deliberate, discuss, take action if any. And so I'd like to make a motion that we take, to consider item K six first. And then continue with the regular, with the, with the regular agenda. And that's a motion that I'd like to make there. So maybe, since I'm making the motion, the vice president of the board should handle that.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion? Any discussion about moving? Okay, then all in favor? Aye.
Alright, discussion action items. K six, to approve the employment contract for superintendent effective July 1st, 2015. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly, thank you, Mr. Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I forgot to ask for discussion. But we're okay, we're good?
Yeah.
Alright.
I think we need to introduce.
Just, just a quick introduction, Dr. Cuautemo Avila, could you please come to the podium there and just introduce yourself, then, then shake hands, please?
Thank you very much. My name is Cuautemo Avila. I am very, very excited to join the Rialto family, to really make a difference for the kids, to serve the kids in this district and to work with the families in the community. I, if you've seen my brief bio recently, I've come with quite a bit of experience really working with diverse groups, both economically diverse groups, ethnically diverse groups, linguistically diverse groups. And I intend to bring that experience along with my other administrative experiences to really continue the great things that are happening here in the district and to also address the areas where perhaps there's room for improvement. I can tell you that I love the energy in the room. When I first came in and I touched one of the metal doors, there was a little bit of energy. But as I came and sat in the room, there was this lovely person who sat next to me and just struck a conversation. That's Ria, she's one of our principals. And she didn't know at the time, but it was really helping me de-escalate the energy in my body. But I'm really, really excited, and especially that it reinforces, this experience reinforces my belief that in many cases, it takes only five minutes to really get to know a person. And I say this because I'm really grateful that in my brief experience with the board, I have seen an amazing group of individuals who truly care about the kids and the staff in this district. And I am very, very excited to be a part of this governance team, to continue to make quality efforts to really move education forward here in the district. So I'm really excited. I know it's very brief, but I really look forward to getting to know each of you personally and meeting you and hearing your stories in the very near future. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I will be here first thing July 1st.
Mr. President, if I could recommend that we have at some point discussion to have a community meet and greet scheduled?
Congratulations, thank you, Dr. Avila. I, I just want to mention, I had, I could have sworn I seen Dr. Ernest Garcia, was, am I right? Was Dr. Ernest Garcia here? Or Grande, I'm sorry?
No, Chuck, Chuck Grande.
Oh, oh, Mr. Grande, did he leave already?
He probably did.
Well, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Grande, Mr. Grande for being here tonight. And also thank Graciano Gomez for being here tonight, longtime board member, city, San Bernardino City Unified, and really community leader here in the island empire. So thank, thank you, Mr. Gomez, for being here tonight also. Next, we move on to business as usual. Consent calendar items, all items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the interim superintendent for individual action. We are going to be, can I get a motion to approve consent calendar items E through J?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Royal, and thank you, Ms. O'Kelly.
I have discussion.
Mr. Martinez first?
Yes, I need to, on item 2.2, I need to recuse myself since at least one of the contractors donated to my campaign. And even though I don't have to recuse myself, I just want to make that public.
What letter item was that?
I 2.2. So everything else I'll be voting on, but just I 2.2, I will recuse myself. So we can do business as usual, as long as that's part of the record.
I 2.2?
Yes.
So would you like to pull that item separately, so we can vote on it separately?
Just make a note, I, I will abstain on that vote.
Okay.
On item I 2.2. Everything else we can vote on regularly.
Okay, any other items? Ms. O'Kelly?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had G six and J 3.1.
J six and J 3.1.
You want me to start?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, first of all, on G six, I am extremely proud of the Carter Speech and Debate Team, which has continual success year after year. However, I am concerned about why yet again we're being asked to approve a ten and sudden event after the event has occurred. G six.
I'll refer to Dr. Edis Sosa, please respond to board concerns.
I think they were the winners and they had to go on to the national competition, and so it was really...
There was a time?
There was a thing of time that we had to get there.
I'll, I'll accept it under those circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay, and then J 3.1. I am deeply disturbed yet again by the number of teachers on temporary contracts who will be out of a job at the end of the year. This year, it is fifty-eight teachers. I thought our plan was to do away with temporary contracts. When is that supposed to happen? And then what percentage of these teachers do you estimate will be called back? And third, when will they be called back? Because I think the cruelest thing we do is to wait and call them back like three days before school starts. We have lost a lot of excellent teachers in this district because of these issues. So can I have some answers?
Yeah, Mr. O'Kelly, I'll refer to Tom.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms.
Wait a minute, point of order, go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
On the revised, revised agenda, we do not have a J 3.1. Page five ends J at 1 dash 3.
Oh, it's in the book agenda.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm questioning. Okay, okay.
It's there.
So, so it is 1.3 instead.
Yes.
Okay. I see, okay. Excuse me, please continue. Thank you, President Montes.
No problem.
Ms. O'Kelly, to answer your question, we definitely agree with you that we need to eliminate as many temporary contracted positions as possible. Just so you know, when I came in October, we had close to a hundred temporary contracted teachers, so we have reduced by thirty, thirty-five so far. Here's what's happening currently, so you know. We did meet with the temporary teachers about ten days ago, and we laid everything out for them. Because of the lack of, I mean, the QEIA funding that is going away at two of our sites, Rialto Middle School and at Colb, we have some teachers that are being displaced from those sites, about twenty-five teachers. We are in the process of placing them, we have to place them first. Then after that, we will do the transfers. Anyone that, a teacher that is put in for transfer, that will be considered. Then we will hire the temps back. So in answer to your question, how many do we think we'll have at the end? That's hard to tell, because we don't know about resignations, retirements, you know, those come in constantly too. But I would, if I were to make a guess, I'm, we're looking at maybe ten to fifteen temporary contracted teachers that would be left. We know from talking to the principals that they are extremely valuable employees to the district, and the principals want them back. Our goal with Muhammad, and we've talked about this many times, is to reduce and reduce that number. Because of QEIA, and we knew that was going away, a lot of these teachers were hired in, because of that QAI situation.
Right.
So the money was going away, and that's part of it, and then teachers on leave. But in answer to your question, our goal is to reduce it to as few as possible.
I don't really understand why we need any.
Well, sometimes...
I mean, we get our projections, and we staff based on the projections.
Sometimes you have teachers on leave, you know, that are out for a certain amount of time, and then you do have to hire someone on a temporary contract there too. One good thing that I've noticed in Rialto is you don't have a lot of turnover of teachers. The teachers that are hired do stay.
And that's because they love our district.
Right, and so that's, that's a good thing. And so in a district that had more, if you did have more turnover, you wouldn't need as many temporary contracted teachers, because you'd always have positions that are turning over. So that's another reason. But our goal is to get it down as few as possible, maybe in the ten to fifteen range.
And then the next thing is, when will they be called back? Because we have a habit in this district, for some reason, of stretching it out. My daughter works in Corona, and they have an agreement with their teachers that the teachers will be called back and told definitely if they will be there with us or not by July 1st.
We're in communication, like I said, we did meet with all of them. I know Aaron Rogers is working on the movement of the displaced teachers right now, and he's about halfway through that. So hopefully we'll be done with that, maybe in the next four or five days. Then we can, the principals have to meet with any transfer candidate. That may be take a week to ten days, and then we can start working on the temporary contracted teachers. So hopefully by mid-May, we will have this done.
So definitely no later than July 1st.
No, we, we, we know that they're in a precarious position. They want to work for us, and they, we want them to stay. But at the same time, we have to get some of this movement done of teachers that are being displaced. So we, we've made our commitment to them, we met with all of them, and they know they can contact us at any time. We, our goal is to hire back as many as possible.
Well, I can tell you that as a former principal, this is a very stressful situation for the principal and the teacher.
It is.
Because when we want them back, we want them back.
We agree, we agree.
Any more discussion regarding that item? Any other items to pull? Okay, with no more items of discussion, we've got a first for, we've got a first for approving items E through J. We got a second, preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to discussion action items. First discussion action item, K one, approve an amendment number two to the agreement with VCS Environmental, Inc. to extend the contract term to June 30th, 2015, and for additional services required to acquire the approval of the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the new condensed natural gas fueling station and relocation of the transportation yard in city of Rialto. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Royal, Mr. Martinez. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just comment. This is one of the items brought to us by Mr. Islam. And I would like to thank you for this specifically. I wanted that on the record, thank you.
Thank, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go to K two, approve an energy service companies agreement with Train USA, Inc. for the energy expenditure plan number two, energy upgrade project at Rialto and Eisenhower High Schools. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly and Ms. Walker. All, do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item K three, approve an agreement... Item K three, approve an agreement with school advisors for assistance in pursuing a facility hardship application for the Eisenhower High School HVAC replacement project. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker and Mrs. O'Kelly. All in favor, do we have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item K four, approve rescinding the award of bid number eleven dash twelve dash zero zero four, E-rate year fifteen, internal connections project to Spectrum Communications for the wireless and network equipment portion and awarded to Nexus, Inc., the next lowest responsible bidder. Can we get a motion to approve item K four?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly.
Do we have discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, first I'd like to ask why the district had no formal contract with Spectrum. Why are we doing business with any contractors without a detailed formal contract agreed upon by both parties?
Ms. Kelly, I have our chief technology officer, she will respond to your concern.
Good evening, Beth Ann Scansky, very chief technology officer of the district. Spectrum Communication went out of business. But prior, the contingency on the contract was E-rate funding. The E-rate funding did not come till almost two and a half years later. And so by that time, Spectrum Communication had already gone out of business. And so we had not drawn up a formal contract with them. So now that they're out of business, we need to go to, since we got the E-rate funding, we're going to the next lowest bidder, which would be Nexus IS.
But it sounded like in the write-up that you never had a contract with Spectrum to begin with.
We never did, because we were waiting for contingency on the E-rate funding. The E-rate funding didn't come until after Spectrum had gone out of business.
Right, to make it clear that they have not done any work. I think that you're concerned have-
Right, no work has been-
Have done any work with our counter, answer is no.
Okay.
We couldn't get a counter, by the time we're ready, they're out of business.
Okay, then next, are we being asked to approve, the way it was written, it was kind of confusing, the three hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars, or the one hundred sixty-three thousand?
The amount of the equipment is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The E-rate funding is coming in at a hundred and sixty-two, about a hundred and sixty-two thousand. So the cost to the district is a hundred and sixty-three, oh, nineteen and thirty-three cents.
So you're just deducting the-
Correct.
E-rate funding, okay.
Correct.
All right, did I have another question? Oh, well, okay, so given all this information, who or when will the upgrades be made at Carter? Since Carter was kind of pushed out of this due to the lack of funding?
Carter will be coming, based on the presentation we did last week, that I did last board meeting, will be doing Carter funding out of the funds that we put aside, already the six million that we put aside.
Wow, okay.
So that will come from another pot of money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Call for the question?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, K five, approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, AHP, stipulated case number fourteen dash fifteen dash forty-nine. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. So that's four, four ayes, one no. Next we go up to comments from the interim superintendent.
Thank you, President Montes. First of all, I want to thank everyone, your nice compliment. And I don't believe I deserve it, but I thank you. I think my commitment to not only parent, community, and the board, will continue to do the best for the student, what's the right thing for the Rialto. That's not going to be changed. I will continue drive one hundred one month speed. I'm a fast driver, I have high expectations, and I, I don't crash. When I drive, I know how I'll get there to my goal. So my goal, I continue going to serve the parents, students of this community, and everyone, every stakeholders, to drive and lead this district as a model of school districts. I think we can, together we can do that. That's my commitment to everyone. And I wish you, I hope and wish you will be part of me. And I can count on you, and I think together we can get there, and that's my goal. So I thank again everyone, your nice compliment and comment. And I believe I did what I think was the best for the district, best for our childrens. They deserve the best. Not, there's no discussion, there's nothing to compromise. They need all the best, and we're responsible to give them all the best. So I thank board, your support, help me continue the journey, and I will continue. Doesn't matter what role of a position I'm holding, my, your expectations and my, would be always above your expectation. I will lead that goal, and I will be there. And I will be available for anyone need me. Doesn't matter what, what position title I have, but I'm here for you. I want to serve you and to meet your need, not, there's no, I have no other need. I'm here for, serve this community and our childrens, and build their better futures. And they're, they should replace us someday, but we need to prepare them. I think together we can do that. And that's the journey I want to continue. I would be, my commitment, I want to be here, as long as the community board wants me to stay. And that's my commitment. Thank you again, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. And I honest to God, I believe this is a great community. We have wonderful parents who care about our childrens, their childrens, and community childrens. Many of them here, they're not speaking for their childrens. They're serving other community members and their childrens. And I really compliment you, what you do every day. And being here this late of the night, and you are awesome. And I, I mean, I mean, you are, I'm proud of you, being, seeing you. I don't know, my mom and dad did this type of work and stay until more, goes to midnight and speaking. But you're doing awesome job, and let's continue that, make sure we get there. The next thing I want to remind the board and community members, please see our student talents. Our art fair festival continue, is, continue happening at our West Wing. The award night is scheduled for April twenty-third, which is tomorrow, at six P M. I welcome everyone, if you please come see our talents, these are our students. And you can see the Rialto, there's a talents here. And we need to be proud of them. And please, I welcome everyone to be there at six P M tomorrow night. And support the event, and it will be award, the school and students will be recognized, and they'll get some award tomorrow night. It's the six P M in the West Wing, it's the, in the corner. Please plan to be there and support our students and recognize the talents that we have. With that, I thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Montes.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Next we go to comments from members of the board. And first and foremost, we begin with our student board member, Ms. Marisol Angulo.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I hope you all have been having a good Earth Day. And also, thank you, first of all, thank you so much for all that you have done for this district, Mr. Islam. We all greatly appreciate it. Secondly, it's tradition for the DSEC students to leave the board something each year. For example, like last year, past years before, they've left like a logo or the motto, to change the motto. Next month, DSEC will be presenting an idea that maybe you guys could think about for next year. And also, yesterday I was awarded, myself and another student, were awarded the Kiwanis Student of the Year. And I would just like to thank the Kiwanis Club of Rialto. Thank you, for such a great honor, and thank you so much. And that'll be all, so I hope you'll have a safe drive home, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angulo. Next we go to our school board member, Mr. Joe Martinez.
Thank you, President Montes. How to be concise when there's so much to say? First of all, Marisol Angulo and Wallace Darman were the Students of the Year for Kiwanis. We were part of that, and I had the joy of awarding you your certificates, along with many of the electeds. And it was a good event, and you make me proud.
Thank you.
Mr. Islam, thank you for your leadership, your high ideals and your integrity. You've, we've had many lunches, some shorter than others, some longer than others. They've always been informative, and you've always shared your zeal, your love for students, your love for Rialto, and your commitment to Rialto. And you reiterated that tonight, and I just thank you for everything. I'm really comforted with you in the financial seat again, because I know that, one, I don't have to worry about that area any, ever again while you're here. But even more so, I've seen that you've overextended yourself. And now you might be able to breathe a little bit. But thank you for everything. Mr. President, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next we go to our fellow school board member, Mr. Joseph Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Montes. And I would like to start by thanking Mohammed and myself personally. Just thinking about what I wanted to say is that, you know, there are other communities, there's other cultures that when they make changes, they still hold the person at high esteem. They don't frown upon it, they look at it as an opportunity to continue to grow. Sometimes you have to make some changes because it is in the interests of the entire goal, the mission, the communities. And so there was a job that needed to be done, and Mohammed took that task at hand. And he was strong, he was courageous, and he's still here before us telling us that he's going to move forward and answer phone calls and hear for us. So we're going to be here for him. And the word is longevity. And this is our, our model. For those of you out there in Rialto, perhaps needing a change, it's okay to take a deep breath, get a breath of fresh air. I know Mohammed right now probably feels maybe a little, little hurt. We all feel a little hurt at times when, when things change. But when the new day arises, he's going to realize that there's a big weight off his shoulders. And we're going to celebrate that, because this man is going to rejoice and shift gears, because he said he's a fast driver. So I will leave it at that, I had more to say. But thank you, Mohammed, and we're here to support, and we will continue to move forward. And better days ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Next we go to our very own board clerk, Ms. Deanna Walker.
Just want to say, and I don't really want to talk now, because I'm going to cry, because I've been holding back tears, like my eyes are all red. I've been holding back tears for the last, what, twenty, thirty minutes? Because I write, I'm like, oh God, I'm going out like a sucker. My kids get me like, oh, mom.
Rebus, I ain't going out like that.
Right, that's why I'm like, hold it up. Just to really say, Mohammed, thank you for everything. And I am not talking about just what you've done here in Rialto, because I've known you prior to Rialto. And your integrity was one of the things that, no matter what, when we were going through a lot of issues for parents in San Bernardino and everything, we knew, no matter what happened, you gave the right numbers, you gave the right information. We could count on your honesty and integrity to make sure that money and whatever the budgeting was there for the students, to educate the students. The great thing is that when I came here to Rialto as a board member, you were here as an interim to hold and stand in the gap as we transitioned to our new vision. And so even though today was the day that we've hired a new superintendent on paper, the change has already begun prior to the new superintendent. The new superintendent has not started working yet. Rialto has already undergone and has started the transformation under the helm of Mohammed Islam. So you have to understand and take that with you, that this change began under your leadership. There will be many things that we're going to be doing in the next year, year and a half, to get to that vision where we all want to be. But you have been the catalyst to hold us together to do that. One of the great things that we shared, you know, over the last, last month about, you know, when we talk about financing and how strong a district is and the vision for a district, is how they stand financially. When us getting that credit rating, that bond rating, that even increased under what we have done in this last year around our measure, that is a testament to your work. That is a testament to the vision of the school, your dedication, and also a foundation for where we're going to go. I feel very, I'm glad that you're here. And although people are saying you're, you know, a weight will be lifted off your shoulders, sorry, it's not. Because there is much work to do. We have many things that we want to do. There are goals and things that we have not even set out on those paths. And your expertise and guidance is going to be needed on that time. So I just want to again, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your givingness, your empathy. Thank you for an ear, a cellphone available, you know, contacting me saying, are you on your way? You know, I'm like, in the parking lot. All of those things that, you know, when you think about what a caring person, who really cares about what's going on here, you've exhibited. So I thank you, and respectfully, I give you accolades for the time that you've spent with us thus far. And we look forward to the future again with you here. Those are my cameras for the night, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next we go to our very own board vice president, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, you know, I followed Mohammed to the, back to the district. He came in, what, August or Sep-, no.
September twenty-twelve.
September of twenty-twelve, and I was elected to the board in November of twenty-twelve. And Mohammed and I had many, many long talks, because I quickly went to him about concerns about Measure Y and concerns about other financial issues. And let me tell you what, he cleaned these issues up extremely quickly and got us financially back on the right track where we were supposed to be. Mohammed, I consider you a friend, I care for you very much, and you have done a really great job. And we hope you stay with us for a long time. So this is a kind of a sad moment, but everything's going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly. Well, I guess, last but not least, that leaves me. Where do I begin? Well, first and foremost, I should thank Mr. Islam as well. I've been one of Mr. Islam's biggest supporters from the beginning. I was a big supporter to have the board appoint him to interim superintendent. And I continue to support Mr. Islam in his career and in his, his ongoing work here with us, at the district. I've never doubted him at any time. When others thought that he wasn't going to be able to do the job to fill the seat of superintendent, I believed in him, and I know, I knew he could do it, and he's done an awesome job. We've been, considering what we've been through, both before he came and after, it's just been, it's just been really a crazy ride for all of us here at the district and here on the board. But Mr. Islam has really taken this very well. He's a good sport, he's not taking this personal. And, you know, we were not elected to make easy decisions. It's one of the things that I found out very early on getting on the board. We were not elected to make easy decisions, we're not elected to make decisions based on emotions, decisions based on friendships, decisions based on personal preferences or bias. We were elected to do what was in the best interest of this district and of the children of this community. And I believe that's what we have done here tonight, today. This morning, we had the, this morning, we had a validation visit at the Los Angeles County Office of Education for the five board members- Um, four of the five board members were able to attend. Uh, and it was a very, very good validation visit to Laco for the newly hired superintendent, which will not start officially until July first of two thousand four, uh, two thousand fifteen. Um, but we had an opportunity to meet with the county superintendent of Los Angeles. We had an opportunity to meet with the executive cabinet for Laco. We had the opportunity to meet with the, the office administration and support staff. And I tell you, we, uh, we, we left there really, feeling really assured and really, really, um, happy that, and that we had made the right decision. Um, and if we look at what, uh, the new superintendent's, uh, experience um, and background is, it, it, it's really, it'll really help us take us to the next level. Um, and we're very happy with everybody here, from the very top to the very bottom, to the left, to the right, all our schools. We, we're really grateful for everyone. Uh, the hiring of a new superintendent does not mean we're not happy with our staff, does not mean we're not happy with anybody, anybody's work product here at the district. But, um, there comes a time where we need to make a decision to move on and move forward, and that time must come, and board has taken action. Um, and again, it's not, uh, it's not meant to be personal or anything against anyone or anything. Um, and we're greatly, greatly grateful for all of the hard work that our interim superintendent has given us over the last two years. Um, and, um, we will never forget that, and we will always remember that. And we know that we've been able to grow as a governing body, and, uh, and, and Mr. Islam has been able to grow as a interim superintendent. Um, a wealth of experience that he's gained, a wealth of experience that we've gained, getting through the difficult, uh, times here, but it is time to move on. Good things are ahead. I want to give Ms. Lisa Lindberg another thanks for recommending uh, the excellent work of the executive search firm that was hired by the board to conduct and facilitate the search. And, um, I want to thank everybody also that was here to support the board's decision tonight. And I want to thank especially everyone here that was here tonight to support Mr. Islam and thank him for all of the hard work. We don't take nothing away from him. Uh, we give him all the praise he deserves, and we look forward to him continuing his, uh, his, continuing his, uh, career with our district for many, many years to come. Um, we're very happy about everything that has transpired today. And last but not least, a parent did not get a chance to make a comment, so I'm just going to allocate a couple of minutes, a minute of my time if possible. Había un padre que quería decir algo? Oh, okay.
Gracias, President Montez. Si nuestro grupo, pues nos habíamos de la decisión que ya habían tomado el, el board.
And our group was not made aware of the decision that the board had made.
Y también pues no queremos quedarnos atrás. Queremos agradecerle a Mr. Islam.
We don't want to be left behind. We would like to give our appreciation and thankfulness to Mr. Islam.
Por su buen trabajo y dedicación en nuestro distrito.
For his good job and dedication in our district.
Por su apoyo a la educación.
For his support in education.
Y especialmente porque siempre tuvo tiempo para atender las necesidades de educación especial.
And especially because he always had time to, uh, take care of the needs of the special education.
Gracias por su gran trabajo y porque sabemos que podemos seguir contando con su apoyo.
Thank you for your great job, and that we know we could continue counting on your support. Thank you, Mr. Islam.
Mr. President, I can think of no better end to a meeting. Um, may I ask that our student board member make a motion?
Sure.
I motion to end the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.